Well, there she is. Carol Richardson is our Assistant City Manager. She's been here for the city with the corporate. She does a fabulous job directing and internal operations of the staff. Charlene Hamilton is going to be your link. One of the link to the planning commissioners serving here. There you are. Charlene also does all these kinds of professional jobs, truly. We get a lot of credit for what she's done here in the city. These department heads and all of the staff are just incredible. So Charlene is the heads up community development. Will be your link for the planning commissioners. Economic Development and Housing, that is within City Manager's office. It's headed up by Aaron Laurel. He is at a conference today. So Katie Yancey and Diane Richards are here. No, you've got to put your hand up. You can't do that. Yeah. They're right there. And lots of going on in terms of that area. They are not department head. Aaron is not a department head, but the results that they get are quite extraordinary. For Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure, you will be understaffed by Public Works staff, and that is Denix Ambia. There you go. You've got to put your hand higher than that in the back row. Public Works has two commissions. Environment and Utilities is also headed by Public Works. Parks and Recreation has two commissions as well. Parks Recreation and Intergenerational, and then Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation. And your Parks and Rec director is -- there you go. That's how you do it. Yeah, no doubt about it. Bob Johnston. Board of Appeals is also in the City Manager's office. And then Disaster Council is linked to the Fire Department. We're in transition there. Chief Rick Martinez also standing up. This is his last week. We'll go into transition. And John Heilman will be our new fire chief starting on Monday. Two key people don't have boards and commissions, but I do want to introduce them. Our Police Chief, Tom McDonald, is right there. Does a fabulous job. And then, a jack-of-all-trades for the city, is our Administrative Services Director, Phil Wright, over there. Does a great job. So we've got a great staff. The key strength, I think, for us is our cohesive relationship with the City Council. They set the policy, and then we quickly go out and implement that. And the leader of our council is Mayor Cabaldin. How was that?
Good. All right. Thanks, Marty. And I want to introduce the City Council members who are here. This is actually, for those of you who've been on commissions for more than one term, you'll notice this tonight's very different. We haven't had commission orientation where every one of the department directors was present, and virtually the entire City Council is also present. So Councilmember Babson Dean is right in back. And two doors down from her is Bill Kristof, the dean of our City Council. And then our Mayor Potem Chris LaDesma and Councilmember Mark Johansson. I don't think either of them will be here this evening to join us as well. But we're thrilled that you're here. We've got a lot to cover tonight. My responsibility to cover a couple of things. One is, for those of you who are new, or those who need to be reminded of what the job of a commissioner is in general terms, and how it fits in the overall city organization and plan. Second is to cover kind of the West Sacramento way of doing business in general around governance and business. I've got a lot of actually area to cover in that domain. And then, third, to talk about our strategic plan that guides the work of the council and the whole organization that is a framework for the work that occurs in each of the commissions as well. So the job of the commissioner is, in some senses, very simple, and in some senses, not. The most direct responsibility, of course, is the commission meetings themselves. And so whatever meeting schedule your commission is on, to participate actively as a member of that commission, to do the preparation and the reading, and to give your best advice and judgment, that's the baseline. If you're not doing that, then you're not doing your job as a commissioner. But it's actually a much bigger portfolio of responsibility than that. So regardless of the specific commission, our expectation is that the city's commissioners are the eyes and ears, and part of the leadership team of city government. Back when Councilman Kristof was elected to the very first City Council in West Sacramento, there were 27,000, 28,000 people in this community. And of those 28,000 people, almost 27,000 of them were related to Bill Kristof, Mike McGowan, I must come -- I mean, and everyone went to the post office at least once a week and saw one of the two postmasters, one of whom was Bill Kristof. And everyone went to Rayleigh's or Safeway. And everyone in town knew each other, and most people in town were related to one another. And I'm only barely exaggerating. And so the five people on the City Council were inextricably linked to every other resident of the community. Of course, we're now twice as large. We passed the 50,000 population mark a little over a year ago. And the composition of our city has also changed dramatically as well. So all those folks that were here when we incorporated, if they're still living, are still living here in our community. But so are, you know, now probably 35,000 new people who weren't here back in 1987, and may not be related to any of the five members of the City Council. In fact, probably the vast majority of them are not. And there's many more places to shop, and people are sending their mail in ways other than the post office. And so the way that we have always communicated that this allows us to have a small-town approach to our civic discourse and decision-making has to evolve. And the commissions and the commissioners are the central part of that strategy. And so it really is, we have an expectation that commissioners are going to be out in the community, active, doing things, talking to people, listening to people, living lives like everyone else in town, but then sharing that information and that perspective through this process. And so it doesn't mean you have to get related to everyone else in the community. And I've talked to many of you about this before. It doesn't mean you have to be at every single event. You don't have to act like a Bill Kristof or a Babson Dean and go to the Rotary Lunch, and then the Chamber Breakfast, and then the Friends of the Library Dinner. You don't have to be at every single event, every night. We recognize not everyone wants to do that. But whatever it is that you're engaged in, and please get engaged in something, whether it's in the cycling club, or the Rotary, or the Chamber, or the Dolphins, or in a playgroup, whatever it might be, and to use that opportunity to listen about what's going on in the community, and to talk about what's going in the community, to be that person that says, "Hey, Jose, you're on some commission, right? What the heck is going on at the corner of 15th and Jefferson right now? What's that project that's happening? Or where is that thing that's supposed to --" You may know nothing about it. But the point is, for citizens in our community to feel as though they know somebody that's helping to guide the future of the community, and can connect, and then that you can make connections with and on their behalf. So that is a central role of a city commissioner in today's more modern, you know, than the 21st century West Sacramento. The commissions themselves are policymaking bodies. What comes to the city commissions are items that are on their way to the City Council. So they're decision points along the way. If you've come from another city, not all cities do it this way. In some cities, commissions do that, but they also act like clubs. They put on events, or they put on programs themselves. Each week, they're asked, like, "Well, what ideas do people have to promote arts?" or something like that. Our commissions are not that. They have a very focused mission, which is, there are issues that are, for whatever reason, making their way to the City Council for a decision. A new affordable housing policy, for example, or a new policy on public art. And the commission has the responsibility of reviewing that policy and giving advice and perspective around those policy issues. The commissions don't, on their own, initiate agenda items. They're not intended to be idea factories each month, because, as we'll talk about in a little bit, we have a strategic plan that frames our work as a going-forward basis. And so the commissions really are there for the purpose of engaging directly in the policymaking apparatus of the city. Those decisions ultimately, with a few exceptions at the Planning Commission and a few elsewhere, where they are on their way to the City Council for final action. So that's our expectation, that the commission will stay focused on that work. And in response, you should expect that the major policy issues that are before the city that are in the domain of your commission are stopping by your commission to be heard. And as our new commission structure is evolving, you know, let us know how this is working, and whether you're seeing those issues. So those are kind of the central roles of commissioners in West Sacramento city government. And as you may know, we've just, this year, implemented a fairly significant reorganization of our city commissions. It's the first major one that we've done since we incorporated in 1987, to consolidate some of our existing commissions and to create some new ones, to try to adapt to what the new issues are that West Sacramento is dealing with. And so for some of you, you're in entirely new territory. The Transportation and Infrastructure Commission, Transportation and Mobility and Infrastructure Commission is a new creature. Transportation used to be a sub-portion of the Economic Development Commission's responsibilities. And honestly, it was treated like it was a sub-element of the Economic Development Commission. And with a streetcar line in plan, two new bridges, lots of bike-share plan, and a whole bunch of other improvements in the city around transportation, it didn't make any sense for that any longer to be thought of as a corollary to economic development alone. But we really needed some focused advice around policy issues around the full range of transportation and mobility issues. So the new commissions are intended to reflect that approach. We've also, the other major element of that is the consolidation, and welcome to Councilmember Johansson, Mark Johansson, is the consolidation of three commissions into one. The Youth Commission and the Commission on Aging, and I know there are some folks who've served on at least one of those at one point in their lives, has been consolidated with the Parks and Recreation Commission into a commission that deals with Parks, Recreation and Intergenerational Services. But that's not the only consolidation of those issues. I want to mark this one for later, but the issues around aging and youth that aren't programmatic, that aren't about youth sports, and aren't about the senior center, but are about the design of the community for seniors and for young people, cross all commission boundaries. So one of the reasons for the consolidation was to stop thinking of issues around aging in place and active aging simply being the province of the Commission on Aging, but that the Planning Commission, and the Transportation and Infrastructure Commission, and the Housing Commission, all need to be paying attention to these issues. These aren't, youth and seniors are not special populations in West Sacramento. They are between the two, and they're most of us, and will be increasingly so over the next generation. We want to infuse these issues and hold all the commissions responsible for effectively taking those on. So that's the substance of this new reorganization. As I said, we are testing it out this year, and the department directors are here in part because they're, you know, they're leading that work with us. And we hope that this will work, and that you'll help us figure this out as we go along. One thing I should say about the relationships between the commissions and the departments. The departments, we've tried to align the commissions to match up more precisely what the department's structures are, but I want to encourage you not to think of yourself as a commission that is, you know, like the advisory body to the department. We are waiting for your advice at the City Council. In most cases, the staff in the department and the department directors will hear your advice before we do and say, "Yeah, that makes sense. Let's just change what we're recommending too." So the vast majority of the time, those who are in commissions today will tell you that commissions, we will hear a proposal from, say, the Community Development Department about a planning issue, and the Planning Commission will take it up, and they will have a vigorous debate about it, and they will suggest some changes in it. And most of the time, the department will say, "You know what? That makes sense." And when they forward the staff recommendation to the City Council, it will say exactly what the commission wanted, they will have changed their recommendation too. But not always. Sometimes the staff will say, "You know what? That's the commission's advice." But our professional advice is something that's different. Maybe it's what we had originally suggested to the commission. And so we're sharing with the council both recommendations, because the ultimate audience for the commission's work is, in almost every case, the City Council and not the department. But you will not succeed without the department really believing that your commission is a value add. So as the experienced commissioners know, you know, you want to use your, the commission is a way to excite the departments about the role that citizen engagement can play in addition to playing it. We don't at the council, if you've watched one of our meetings, you will never see us, well, very rarely, you know, comment negatively about our own, the work that's being performed in our own operation, or, you know, embarrassing one of our department directors. Okay, I might have done it once or twice. But we really try not to do that. We try to promote a culture in this chambers of mutual support. We're on the same team, we're trying to get to the same place. We might have a different perspective, or maybe we just need to learn better. But we really go to great pains not to get into great fights while finding ways to disagree and to share our differing perspectives together, and find ways that will cause, that might cause our staff to think about an issue differently, but without making them feel as though they're stupid, or they have failed, or they don't share our values, because we know that none of that is true. And so we would strongly encourage, in fact, my expectation in making appointments each cycle, is that commissioners follow that same ethic. Because we have, and I hear those from my colleagues around the region, perhaps the best staff of any city or county in the entire greater Sacramento region. And we don't want to jeopardize that by having our staff, you know, have to spend Thursday night at a commission meeting where they're just getting attacked and destroyed, and their professional reputation tarnished. There are ways to communicate disagreements around policy issues and around approach that don't need to do that, so that we can maintain the level of talent and commitment that we have along our staff lines. So we would appreciate that if all the commissioners would do the same. Okay, so that's the commission role. I want to do, so I've started to talk a little bit about the kind of the way that we do business in West Sacramento that is a bit different from some other jurisdictions, just for those of you who've moved from somewhere else, or watched, you know, The West Wing or something on TV around how some of these government stuff works, or if you've read too many textbooks about government, that is a little bit different here. It's not unique, but we do do business differently. One is that we have, I think we're acknowledged for our iterative approach to policymaking, which is to say, we don't go out looking for policies to make. This is a, so if one person has a problem, you won't see us generally passing a whole new law about a topic. Somebody has an idea that somebody did somewhere else, we don't generally pass a law just to have a law. Now, that's different from other places, right? People want to make sure no problems ever happen, nothing bad ever happens, or they want to make a statement, or do something symbolic to support something. There's a lot of value in that. But what I think we've learned in West Sacramento, because of our unique place as being historically one of the poorest communities in the region, and we knew if we were going to get anything done, we had to go, we had to fire on all pistons. We had to put everything we had into the priorities that we shared. So you didn't see us adopting a nuclear-free zone. It didn't mean that we didn't want, that we wanted to host nuclear weapons in West Sacramento. It just meant, we needed every one of our staff and every bit of our resources focused on waterfront revitalization, right? And so we weren't going out looking for those kinds of issues to deal with. When the issue, when a question, somebody wanted to open up a brewery near the port, and that's not allowed under virtually anybody's zoning ordinances, the, not the brewery itself, but the sale of beer at a taproom in an industrial district, we didn't have, we didn't allow that to occur under our old laws. Nobody did, really. But this iterative approach to policymaking was, we looked at it as, well, can, is there, what can we allow that will allow us to see how things might work, right? Rather than try to, we could spend two years doing an analysis, maybe hiring a consultant, maybe having a task force that would tell us all the 10,000 things that would go wrong if we allowed Bike Dog Brewery, a brewing company, to open up. We could do it that way. That's what many jurisdictions would do. But instead, why don't we figure out, and David Tilly, who was the senior planner who was working on that project and loves beer, and so he's, could we figure out how we might allow it to work, put some guardrails on it, and then see? And let's focus on like how much law we really need based on what our experiences are. That's a quintessentially West Sacramento approach, is rather, you know, the law and regulation is, in many cases, our last response to a challenge, and more, we're looking for opportunities. In part because I think we see ourselves as a platform, city government and the city as a platform for people to do things. The most common question I get as the mayor is, "Why can't you put a Trader Joe's at the corner of pick any street that you want, right? Why have you not put a Trader Joe's there?" Or if a McDonald's opens, somebody will invariably say, "Why did you choose a McDonald's and not put an Applebee's there instead?" Or "Why McDonald's and not an In-N-Out?" There is a persistent mythology in our society that government decides all of these things. But really, city government in particular, maybe more than others, is simply a platform for other people to do stuff. And we can decide things that we don't want to happen, and things that we do want to happen in big chunks, but the actual decision to put your life savings on the line and start a coffee house is going to be somebody else's. We cannot make anybody do that. And so much of what we're trying to do in all of our policy areas in City Hall is to create the right conditions for other people to do amazing and wonderful and terrific things. And that is, so we don't want to over-constrict it by too many rules, and too many regulations, and too many laws that don't allow us to see the potential that's out there from people's magic that we have not yet considered. So this is a fundamental way that we have traditionally done business in our community that you can see the results of throughout the city. Now, the Port Brewing Row, PBR, is a, you know, is a center of the region around that approach, not just because of the beer, but because other areas in the region are saying, "You know, those roles, those rules that we have that prevent, you know, taprooms in industrial areas, isn't that kind of stupid? Because there's not like there's people spewing toxics into the air anymore. This is not 1920. Maybe we could allow a little bit more of these kind of land uses to occur." So that is a key part of our operating philosophy here. Second is that we're really focused in terms of citizen engagement on getting the job done. So we have a lot of different opinions and perspectives in the city. We're a very diverse community. But there's actually a surprising amount of agreement around some of the bottom-line issues that people care about in the city. And it's been true since the city first voted to incorporate. When this, which in 1987, people said their priorities were, "We want to take back West Capple Avenue and have a downtown. We want the waterfront opened up for public use. We want, we just want any retail at all." You know, Wild West Feed and Hollywood Hardware were the, you know, the bulk of our retail at the time. We want some retail. The things that were on the list have been very consistent over time and across neighborhoods. But at that time, we were dirt poor as a city. We're still not rich, but we were dirt poor then. And we had been disinvested in for a century when we were unincorporated, part of Yolo County. So if we were going to get anything to happen, we had to get really lucky, and we had to make it possible for others to do stuff, and we had to just focus all hands on getting that thing done. I'll give you an example. When IKEA was looking in the region for a place to locate, and IKEA is one of the most sought-after retailers that you could possibly have. And the city of Sacramento was one of the finalists in the site selection process for IKEA. We were the other principal one. The city of Sacramento put several million-dollar subsidy on the table. A several-million-dollar subsidy for us, especially then, but even now, is like not possible if we don't have several million dollars to put into a subsidy. So, you know, you would have thought we would have lost that one. But we got that project because we said, "Well, we could get you open, you know, a year, a year and a half faster than Sacramento can." And you can make $5 million in 10 minutes at IKEA. So you don't, so, but the only reason that happened is because we could say to IKEA, "We will act as though we want that project." Now, that sounds simple, but most governments don't act that way. There's somebody like this mayor, the city manager, that says, "We want this project." And then the whole rest of the organization is there to tell you why this can't work, and that can't work, and this can't work, and that can't work. And our approach has been, if we want something, let's focus on the outcome, and we'll make the steps to get there, we'll make them in service to that outcome. This is an important part of our success. Another good example, actually, is the park that we just announced with Disney, the Kaboom Park, that's going to be opening up at Bright Park. Hopefully, you'll all be with us on May 31st for the big community build. But that project has been, it was in process in another jurisdiction for a year, and was unable to come to fruition. And, you know, our staff team was able to put all the pieces together. Disney approached us about this three weeks ago, I mean, just for some perspective, and the park will be open in less than, you know, less than eight weeks from now. That is a gigantic move for government. But it is because of that philosophy, and because our staff knew that they didn't have to look behind their back, that if they knew what the community wanted, and what the council had put in its strategic plan, that Bright Park was important. Nobody had ever, we hadn't voted on a Disney project, we hadn't voted on this specific thing in this particular configuration. But our staff knew, they had, all of us would have said to them if they asked us, "Go. Go, go for it, make it happen." That's a key part of what we try to maintain in our relationship between the governmental bodies and the staff in our team, is trying to set the big vision and the parameters for that, and then allow it to come together without throwing too much gum onto the street in its way. That also has important implications for you as commissioners in your actual meetings and hearings, because we are, if you, for those of you who aren't commissioners, you know this already, for those of you who are new to this, we have fewer meetings than most other governments in the region. Public, well, we have our mandatory public hearings, but we have fewer meetings and workshops, and task forces, and other sorts of things. And we don't get as many people coming to them. And you might say, "Well, that's too bad. Why is that? Why can't we get more people to come to our Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure Commission meeting? This is important stuff. Where is everyone? Maybe we should get our Public Information Officer to tell people to come to our meetings." Well, we have a different, we have, what's evolved over time here is a little bit of a different approach, which is, we know, people tell us, both in their polling, and elections, and at the Nugget, and at Safeway, and everywhere, they tell us very clearly the big-picture things that they want, what they want their community to be like. And they expect us to deliver it for them. And the reason why they have voted for Bill Kristof now 17 times, and me 16, I think, is because that happens. What, but those things have only occurred because we've had a relatively lean decision-making process, where we don't have a lot, we don't have more process than we need. And we don't go asking questions that we don't necessarily need the answer to. So this is, for those of you who are like really into this topic, I did a TED Talk in Sacramento about this a couple of years ago, just around what public engagement, especially in meetings, what it should look like, and why we shouldn't worry so much about it. And so if you're really interested in this topic, or you think I'm being crazy when I'm saying this, it's not a big priority to us to generate hordes of people to come to commission meetings or to City Council meetings to give up the one evening a week that they have to tutor their daughter in algebra because they're so worried that we're going to do something bad. We don't want that kind of, we don't want a world where you feel like you have to come to a commission meeting. So you shouldn't feel like if there's nobody at your commission meeting that you have failed, or that what you're doing isn't super important. Hardly anyone comes to our meetings. And yet, the regional polling shows our citizens of West Sacramento, by like an 80% margin, think the city's on the right track. It's stronger than any other city in the region, even though people don't come to the meetings. And it's because they're not coming to the meetings for the most part, because they think things are pretty good, or they're actually working on making more great things happen. They're spending that Thursday evening working with a friend on how to build a brewery instead of coming to a commission meeting. So I'd encourage you to think about that. When people do come, one key lesson for new commissioners in particular is to understand that just that they're, they're the people that are in front of you, and they're usually angry, and loud, or both. And it's very, psychologically, it's very tempting to weight them as bigger than they are, especially because they will almost always start their comments with, "On behalf of the public, I would like to tell you this." You have to remember, you are also a member of the public. The six other people that are sitting up there with you are members of the public. If 10,000 people come to your commission meeting, then there's something going on. But oftentimes, in many governments, there's a lot, our sense of civic engagement gets warped by paying too much attention to who's in the room, and paying zero attention to who's home tutoring their daughter in algebra, who's also making, they're saying something by not coming to the meeting. They're saying that, you know, that whatever else they're doing is more important to them. They're less worried about what it is that you're doing that night than their other priorities in life. And that's a signal that you need to hear in some way. It doesn't mean that they're perfectly happy about everything, certainly, by far from it. But it does mean something that they're not there. So you will discover, some of you will have folks who come to every one of your commission meetings, and you'll kind of get their vibe of who they're speaking for. But your job is not to poll, anyway, right? The commission's job is not to figure out how many people in the city want this, and how many people in the city want that. Your job isn't to be the technical expert. You know, we didn't appoint mostly engineers to the Transportation and Infrastructure Commission. The council has to go through elections, and so we better be getting it right about, well, do most people want this in town or not? We'll get very clear feedback, the five of us. And our staff, we take, we take great care to make sure that the person that is designing the bridge is actually a bridge engineer. So those two pieces are covered. What we want to, what we want to know from you is like common sense, on-the-ground perspective, your own unique perspective on this, on the opportunities, the problems, and the challenges. And so you don't need to worry too much about, "Am I speaking on behalf of the whole public here? Or am I the expert on, I don't understand the equations underlying this engineering?" Don't, we don't care. That's not what you're there for. You're there to provide a citizen's perspective, your own perspective on that work. Concomitment with that, though, is to have some humility about that, that your experience, I guarantee you, is not, maybe not unique to you, it's not universal. That across West Sacramento, there is a wide array of people of every type, living in every kind of situation, who have different expectations, different values, different pain points, different hopes than you do. And so as you're expressing and your own points of view and your own perspective, just keep in mind that you might be really, really hot on climate change emissions right now, and everybody should be biking, and you bike, and you fell in love with biking, and why isn't there a bike lane everywhere? And it's useful to think, and I'm that person, but it's useful for me to remind myself sometimes, it's still 92% of people are not biking, and so we might need something for them, too. All right? So we, it's a sense of perspective about what you're, what you are also bringing to the table yourself. But I hope you'll feel like you are not, you are not expected to be the senator from Bridgeway Lakes on this commission, you know, who is responsible for representing that neighborhood or this particular group or whatever. We're asking you to give us your best, just your best perspective as a citizen of this community, bringing to bear your whole history and experience with it, but within that framework. We will be asking you to make hard decisions. Commissions are not, they're not mainly about, "Would you like to have a Disney park or a soccer park?" I mean, that would be nice. I mean, it's not mainly about a lot of wonderful things and you get to choose which one you want the most. They are rarely, "What would you like to see at the corner of 15th and Jefferson? Would you like a Trader Joe's or would you like an In-N-Out Burger?" And you get to decide. Very rarely is that the job of a commissioner. Instead, the kinds of policies that we're looking at involve, they almost always involve trade-offs. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't need a new policy about them. So sometimes those trade-offs are difficult long-term policy questions, like how do we balance demand for parking while we also want to make sure that there's enough, that folks don't move into a new neighborhood and all have cars and nobody uses their bikes or transit and then we end up with gridlock? How do we balance those two things together? There's no one answer. If we build no parking at all, we'll have gridlock. If we build only parking, we'll never achieve our land, the vision that we have for, you know, a walkable amenity-filled retail shopping entertainment place. So neither is the case, but as we're trying to navigate that over time, your perspectives around, well, what's going on in your life or people in the Rotary Club that you're in, in their lives or people who are in the painting club with you, whatever, we want to know what are people actually experiencing in that work. Right now, we're dealing with the transition of the Pioneer Bluffs. The Pioneer Bluffs is that area between the freeway and the brand-new Mike McGowan Bridge. It's an industrial area that's in transition. And all three of the council members who can tell you, it's one of the hardest things we deal with almost every month, where we have to make a decision about how quickly do we encourage or incentivize or not disincentivize old industrial companies from moving out or do we want them to stay? And if they stay, then what does that mean for bike lanes or for the woman who's going down South River Road with a baby carriage? And those are difficult choices to make and that have to constantly be revisited. And those are the kinds of questions that we hope you'll be thinking about in the context of a living city throughout your time on the commission. Because we've gone through this many, many times where we've had to make decisions that the neighborhood didn't like in Washington. If you, I know some of you actually have lived at the Metro Place Development there. That was heavily, heavily opposed by the neighborhood. Now, it's in one of the prized parts of the area. River Point, where IKEA is, at one point, we had the developer come forward and say, "Hey, retail's never going to work here. Can we turn it all into offices?" And we almost, we thought about it. I mean, there's many of these points where we've had to like bite the bullet and make some difficult decisions in that moment. And we need you to do the same thing because if you give everybody a free pass and say, "Oh, no, we're just going to do the easy one every time," and the council gets stuck with all the hard ones alone, sometimes we'll get it wrong. So, you know, we need you to help keep us on our own strategy and our own plan on behalf of the community as a whole. One other piece that we are different about here is that we are not, I'm going to say we're not slavish to any particular interest groups. In some communities, it's, you know, if you come to a council meeting or a commission meeting, it's a long line of groups, of organizations. You know, I'm here on behalf of the Building Industry Association, then followed by somebody on behalf of the Sierra Club, then followed by somebody on behalf of the Labor Council or whatever. And then the meeting's over. You've never heard from anybody else and each person up there is voting based on one of those signals. That's not west Sacramento. Maybe it's because when we were incorporated, this was such a tightly-knit community that you didn't identify that, "Oh, I'm the building industry guy." It's like, no, I'm your cousin. So of course, you know, we're going to have to work this out. We're not a part like that. We're still a community. We're a family. We're going to have to, I'm going to have to see you at Thanksgiving regardless. So we can't just, we can't segment each other into these constructed identities. It's been extraordinarily powerful for us because virtually all those interest groups, bless their hearts, would like us to give them more resources that we don't have. So we do our best to make sure the building industry is strong. But if we did everything that they wanted and we cut all of our impact fees back, for example, we wouldn't be able to build any parks or any roads or we wouldn't be able to build a water system. It's not shame on them for asking, but shame on us if we just did whatever they wanted. And that's true for all those, every one of those, even the environmentalists. All those groups have, you know, a set of stuff where they want us to do more than we might do in terms of what's good for the community. It's important that their voices be heard, but you all have to make the right call on behalf of the community. All right? Listening to all of that, but ultimately hearing, "Okay, how does that all come together for the community? What's the community ready for? All right? How do we move the community forward?" I mean, if you are, when I came on the council, I was a pretty radical environmentalist and I also was kind of gay. And neither of those things were acceptable at the time. I'm just figuring, what's the long game? Not for imposing a policy framework on a community, but to meet the community halfway and then another halfway and then another halfway. So we're growing together. That's important for all of us in decision-making responsibilities to understand that our job isn't, we weren't put in these roles to tell people what to do. We were put in these roles to help people achieve their aspirations and to solve their pain points. And as we do that, we can do it in ways that hopefully will help their sense of possibility and values and relationships evolve over time. But that's partly inherent in the way that we do that work in the first place. One other piece I wanted to emphasize was that we are moving, because you may know we're a Code for America City this year, and which, so we're doing a major technology project in that regard. But we're also learning a lot about the principles of design thinking and especially user design around policymaking. We're starting to apply them in citizen engagement as well, really thinking about use cases as opposed to just opinions. The classic one I give on this cases is we traditionally, we ask people their opinions about planning issues that are very specific. So we'll say, because we're told by state law to do that. So we will hold a hearing and we'll say, "Do you think we should be increasing the height allowed in this neighborhood from three stories to four stories or not?" And most people have an opinion, right? If you ask them, they'll have an opinion. They might not have had an opinion one minute ago, but if you ask them that question right now, they will come up with an opinion fairly quickly. It's rooted in nothing, but you know, people, human beings are very good at generating opinions. And then if you say, "Should there be free parking around this four-story building or not?" Of course, there should be free parking. Should there be a parking lot nearby that's free for everybody? Yes, 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 of course. And so we focused on asking people what they think and what they think that they want. And that's important, but we also, kind of the apple lesson is also thinking about, what do people need? What can we understand from their experience, from their behavior, from other signals that they're sending us about what might be important or valuable or useful to them that they may not have thought of because it just wasn't a possibility before in west Sacramento because the pace of change has been so fast? That's been a really important way to think about these issues. So instead of asking people, "What do you think about heights and free parking and all that?", we and our partners at Secog as well have been, you know, asking instead people, "Here's some pictures of four different kinds of downtowns. Which one feels more like the place you want to live in?" Okay, now I can see that what you want, what you're describing would require four stories, not two, but also not 20. And what you're describing would require, you know, street parking but not off-street lots. I mean, we can figure that out. There's actual data around how you accomplish those things. But it's really trying to figure out, what is the ultimate goal that our citizens have in some of these areas? And then using our expertise, our experience and the data to help get to that goal as opposed to asking our citizens about every single intermediate step that they don't have any information about or any experience about and ignoring the information that our traffic engineer and every one else already has from a globe worth of experience and data on those same topics. So paying attention to that design is a really important piece. I want to say a couple of other things about the culture of the community and the, because the commissions, I'll be honest, every one of the commissions is, has a large representation from the Southport portion of our city. That's the vast majority of applicants to city commissions were from Southport. This realm, like every other realm. This is the first time ever where every single commission is not composed of folks from Southport. And so I made a very affirmative effort. So if you know folks who are, used to be colleagues of Arizona Commission and they're not anymore, it's probably because I'm trying to create more geographic balance on the commissions themselves. And that's for a couple of reasons. One is, a lot of our policymaking over the next several years is going to be in the urban part of the city. That's where we have a lot of unanswered policy questions to resolve. And we need folks who understand that field. But also because west Sacramento is a community that came together essentially as a federation of at least four different neighborhoods, Broderick and Bright, Old West Sacramento and Southport together. And they're all stakeholders in this community. And if you ask people in any one of those places, even those designations seem too big for them. You know, folks who live in the state streets or in Western Oaks are grouped in Old West Sacramento along with, you know, folks in Westfield and they may have never met or seen each other. And the same is true of Southport. So as we think about the geography of the city, one, I would just suggest two things. This is just my opinion. One is that we over-obsess about the divisions in some senses, which is to say, we, you know, every, if you go to my mayor's Facebook page, you'll see on, no matter what the project is, the first complaint is, "Why is this not in this other neighborhood that you're always leaving behind? All you care about is Southport." That was last year. This year, it's, "All you care about is the north." And then somebody else will say something about another area. So that we constantly have this, you know, "Why is my neighborhood getting left behind?" That's principally been a north-south issue. But it's changing more recently because so many projects have been in the north. Not because we made a decision and now we're shifting from the south to the north, but because that stuff that I said before about, other people have to do stuff and put their life savings on the line to start an Edible Pedal or a Green Thumb Deli or a Broderick, you know, restaurant. We can't make them put something there, no matter how much we want it. We cannot force people to start a business or develop a project. And it's now, it is now happening. So the amount of investment across the city has been actually relatively even. The amount of public investment in the city has been, that's not developer-fee funded, has been mostly in the north. So we've paid a lot of attention to those issues around equity in the city without being, we don't have district elections, so we don't obsess about it. We don't say, "Okay, you can't have anything until they get something next." It can't work that way. We don't have that kind of slack in the city to be able to force projects. But we pay attention to geography without being consumed about it. But you ought to know, most people in the city do not live in Southport. This is a, and for folks in Southport, people in the north are, it's not, let me put this charitably, it's not an Africa that you're sending aid packages to. This is, when this debate breaks out on my Facebook page, this is what happens. Folks in South, "We need to do something for the children of the north, you know, and we should do something up there for them." And then folks in the north are like, "All those rich people are in the south and they get everything." And it actually tends to be the same families. Like, a lot of people who are in Southport are, you know, their parents are still living in Elkhorn Village in Broderick. So this distinction is not for real, but these things that emerge around how different the places are, they just aren't. Our two wealthiest neighborhoods in the city are Bridgeway Lakes in Southport and the rivers in Broderick. Our two, some of our poorest neighborhoods are in Bright and in Arlington Oaks in Southport. These divisions are real, but they don't tell the whole story of the community. And so I would strongly encourage you, especially the new folks, but actually even some of the mid-time people, to just get out and learn more about the rest of the community, the rest of the neighborhoods in west Sacramento for yourself. And really, and make sure you're talking to folks. It's easy now because you can just pop into Broderick or grab an Insight copy at Edible Pedal if you're from Southport and just hang out and talk to folks. "Hey, I'm a commissioner. I want to learn more about what's going on in the neighborhood." And same thing if you're in the north and have only heard about the, you know, the great Emerald City on the other side of the Barge Canal. And then remember that actually, the, almost the largest city, neighborhood area in the city is the center part of west Sacramento, which no one ever talks about at all. But the center part of west Sacramento, where Charlie and Councilman Christoph both live, is historically the largest part of the city. It's been the most influential part of the city for many, many decades, but it's largely forgotten in this whole north-south divide debate. So it's for real. Don't let me minimize it. It is a real issue around the evolution and the progress in each of our neighborhoods. But it's a, but we have the ability to change it. It's not, and it's much more complicated than we sometimes think. Intergenerational is the same thing. This is another area where I think some humility that all of us bring to bear, the totlot, tennis court, this crowd, which I'm all for, this demographic in our city. We have a very large senior population in our city. We always have. Actually, when I first moved here in 1993, that was the largest population in the city. And that's no longer the case, but it's still quite large and it will get much, much larger over the next couple of years. And same thing for young folks. And we have as an approach in this city, the idea of creating a portfolio of places where everybody can live their whole lives in west Sacramento. And this is a really important framework that's in all of our strategic plans for all the commissioners, which is the idea that we're not Rockland. We're not trying to create a place that is one gigantic, beautiful suburban development, which in Rockland is wonderful and it's a great example of how a suburb can be a fantastic place to live. We want that, but we don't want to only be that. We are going to just be a midtown Sacramento with lots of, you know, hip coffee houses and bars that are open late and small places to live and all. We want that, but we don't want to just be that. We want to be a little of everything. One, because that's who we've always been and we want to preserve the places that we have. Two, because none of us know what the future looks like. We want to have a balanced portfolio of investments that we've made in our future. But probably most important is we want to be the place where, you know, when your kids, when your daughter comes home from the Air Force or from college, that she can find a place to live here that she wants to live in, that she wants to come back to, which she probably can't do in Rockland. And when she meets somebody and wants to, you know, be close to the clubs and all of that, that she has that opportunity in her late twenties. And then when they have kids and maybe they decide they want to be on a cul-de-sac and have a little bit more privacy, that there's a place for her still. She doesn't have to leave her family and the church that she's in and all the, you know, and she doesn't have to stop going to the Thursday night wine tastings. She can still have all of her life and still be in the same place. When she gets older, kids leave and she wants to get, you know, a townhouse on the waterfront, she can do that. I mean, the place is here, every possible kind of lifestyle is open to her and she can still be a west Sacramentoan and she can still be part of, she can still be coaching the soccer team without having to leave. That's the kind of community that we're trying to create. And so as you approach this work in each of your commissions and one of the reasons why I said, "Bring your perspective to bear while also remembering, trying to put yourself in a lot of those other perspectives, too." And even yourself, think, "Okay, what am I going to want when I'm 80? What did I want, what did I really want when I was 21, coming back home? And maybe I didn't come back to west Sacramento after I grew up and why not?" Think about even your own stages of life will make you a much more effective commissioner in terms of advancing our strategic plan. So those are just some tips on how to be a west Sacramento-specific commissioner as opposed to Davis or Sacramento or Rockland. I want to talk next about our strategic plan, which we actually use. I've been, I know a lot of you have been on, you know, boards with you or served in, been in jobs with you. And most strategic plans by most public organizations are not used. Somebody sits around with a bunch of butcher paper, they write up a strategic plan and nobody ever looks at it again. It's written in words that would not offend anybody, where everybody's priorities are contained in it, and that's the end of it. Ours is not that way. We use our, we have for the last 10 years, I think now, done a very disciplined strategic plan process that is intended to guide our staff team, give us a framework by which to hold our city manager accountable because it's all the rest of the staff in the city, other than the city attorney, work, report to the city, to the city manager. And frankly, to hold each other accountable and to put some boundaries on ourselves. In the absence of a strategic plan, a city council or a parks commission starts to wander. Every week, new priorities emerge and new ideas and you forget what you were working on the week before. So we created this process to, that's very tangible a way for us to set our objectives for the year. So Chris Rankin, who's our city clerk, I don't know if Marty introduced Chris or not, but Chris is our city clerk and she oversees the entire commission infrastructure and process and policy here. She's handing out the draft of the strategic plan elements. This is actually the adopted strategic plan, but it's, you'll get a laminated copy and all that to carry around with you for when you're answering questions in the Nugget or Artyaga's. So you'll be fully informed as well. But we, as I say, we use this to identify what our key action priorities are for the year to guide our work. One thing that the strategic plan is not is a list of what the most important things are. Our strategic plan is not a list of what are the things that we care about the most or the things that we want the most. The strategic plan is bifurcated into two kinds of categories. The first is the policy agenda. The second is the management agenda. The policy agenda, those are the priority items that the council needs to do something on this year. Or so they are, they are important items, but they're important items that require policy action. And second is the management agenda. And the management agenda in general doesn't require complex council policymaking. And the management agenda in general doesn't require complex council policymaking. And when I say council, that means that will, in most cases, involve at least one of the commissions. But the management items are items that are high priority items for the management to deliver on that are kind of tangible deliverables for the year. So I say that, that even, that it's not necessarily the most important thing. Because if I ask folks at West Sacramento, "What's the most important thing that you care about?" You know, if I ask them right now, it might be, you know, the quality of the public schools. Well, that's a very, 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 very important issue. It isn't on our, on this agenda, because there isn't a set of actions that the city council can take as a policy matter this year to do something about that issue, because we don't have any legal responsibility authority for schools. So that's how this is also a priority. So it's areas where there are both opportunity and a need for policymaking. And it's useful for you, both so you can see kind of the framework of issues that are coming to you and also get a sense, a preview of what kind of topics are coming. So there, what you'll see later is a more elaborated version of the plan, but just to go over some of the top ones in the policy agenda. Our flood protection strategy, this actually is our most important issue. I said a second ago, this is not a list necessarily of our most important stuff, but it does also include important things. Flood protection is our most important topic, because if we don't solve, if we don't take care of this, we don't exist at some point. It's a sure thing that a flood would wipe us out if we don't finish our levy upgrade plan. And so the council, in conjunction with Congresswoman Metz, who has a lot of flood protection work to do. This area will, has the potential of touching on several of the works of several of the commissions. The Transportation Infrastructure Commission, which deals with levees itself, will be in this, in this mix. But, you know, issues around parks on top of levees, roads on top of levees, and other issues may also connect to the flood protection issue. Planning issues definitely can connect to flood protection, because our ability to expand, for example, into new territory is severely constrained by our ability to be able to provide, to build new levees to protect entirely new areas. So flood protection is, has been on this list for many years at the top, and we've continued to make a lot of progress on it, but it's a billion-dollar program, and we're a city of 50,000 people, so that is a lot of money, and we need, and every piece has to line up for that to work. Second is streetcar development. We expect that if the City of Sacramento's vote prevails later this month and next month, that we'll be moving towards federal approval for the project and federal funding for the project this year, with the hope that we would be able to move to the beginning of the construction work at the end of next year. So this project is definitely also on a relatively fast track, or at least our initial plan has been to have it open by a year after the arena opens. But there are still lots of policies, and Mr. Johansson is working a lot on what kind of cars we should have for the streetcar and whether there should be overhead wire. So there's a lot of decisions to be made in that regard as well. Bright Park Funding and Development, this was on our plan before the Disney announcement. So the Disney announcement is an example of sort of how we try to set things up for magic to happen. We don't know that it will, but we need to get, we need to get a lot of things ready for something to happen. And at any one moment, we might have 10,000 opportunities in a box waiting for it to happen, that we don't spend a lot of money on until, we've spent just enough money to get them ready and then stop until we find an opportunity to come along like the Disney one. So Bright Park, Disney is the first part of that. We'll be doing some soccer field work at Bright Park as well in order, as part of the Disney project. The Washington Sustainable Communities, we got a grant from the federal government a couple of years ago to craft, a small grant actually, to craft a sustainable communities plan for the Washington area of the Broderick neighborhood. And we have just wrapped up that plan, and now it's time to implement it. And that plan is wide-ranging. It covers arts and parks and transit and economic development and a wide range of other, buildings and design standards. And so now is the time, all the pieces of that have to be put into the rest of our policy documents. We have to start applying for grant money for those kinds of projects to proceed. Then last on the top priority pieces, innovative and new revenue sources. We are, we're not the lowest tax city in the region, but we are definitely trying to be fiscally prudent, not as a philosophical issue, but we have a lot of folks in our community on fixed incomes, we have a lot of poverty in our city, and so it's not an op, we don't have the option that our neighbor down the causeway has, whenever we see a need or a problem or opportunity, "Let's do a parcel tax or some other kind." That's just not possible in a place like ours with the economic diversity that we have. And so identifying new approaches to revenues. One example of this that we did, that we're doing this year is the Infrastructure Financing District that is, we invented essentially, we're inventing this solution post redevelopment. And so several of the commissions will be working within the envelope of the Infrastructure Financing District policy that we just created that will be going before our voters later this year for their final approval. But it is a mechanism for us to keep doing big community improvements and infrastructure investments, even though redevelopment doesn't exist. So those are the top priorities. And the main distinction between top and high is for the city manager to know how much we're going to grill him during his performance evaluation. But if you look, you can't see here, because the only one we have up is 2014. In the room where we hold our closed-session meetings, we have all of these strategic plans from the beginning of time when we started doing them in that room. And if you look around, if you go, you're welcome if the room's unlocked when we're done to walk around there, you'll see virtually everything on there has been accomplished. It's actually quite extraordinary what the community has been able to accomplish based on that, on that framework. And so we're pretty confident on these as well. Some of them have taken a couple of strategic plans to get done, but virtually all of them have happened. So high priorities is the Community Investment Action Plan. That action plan is the investment strategy that's connected to the Infrastructure Financing District for the most part. And so community investment in some ways is our new word for redevelopment, but it's how we deliver infrastructure and amenity improvements in the, in the community to match that up. I should mention Andrew Sturmfeld, who's a planning commissioner, was the volunteer to staff a special task force that we had on how should West Sacramento proceed after redevelopment. That's been a huge success for us and a model around the rest of the state, so earned a seat on the planning commission, but thanks, thanks a lot, Andrew, for that, for that leadership. Our long-term capital financing strategy, this is a challenge for us, but it's also a great opportunity. We have a, we're a very ambitious little city. If you look at the Regional Transportation Plan that's about to get adopted, we have, certainly you could, well, don't correct me, because I'm going to be close enough, but I think we have like $800 million worth of projects on the list for this, for this plan. And I want to say our neighbor down the causeway has like 18 million or something. It's, I mean, it's an extraordinary difference in kind of what our ambition is for the, for just, that's just transportation alone, not counting the billion-dollar levy project as an example, or all the housing or the parks or everything else that we want, that we want to build. So we have an extraordinarily ambitious capital strategy. And that capital strategy also has to do with the fact that we have a lot of roads to maintain, and our roads, although we are, then it's really mad, but we're the best in the region in terms of road maintenance and rehab, you know, we score the highest, that's still nowhere near good enough. It's still, it's still enough to give you pothole, I mean, to give, to cause potholes and mess up your car and your truck and our economic development. So we've got to figure out how to solve that piece of it too. And then similarly, you know, whether it's our pipes or the rest of the infrastructure. So we have a lot of new stuff that we need to create and a lot of old stuff that we have to rehab or rebuild. And so this long-term capital financing strategy is crucial. It's one of the reasons why the Transportation Infrastructure Commission was created, as well as Utilities and Commerce, which deals with the water system, the stormwater system, the wastewater system, and telecommunications system as well. The bridges, we have a, we're committed on both projects. Both projects have gotten their federal go-ahead. The Broadway Bridge through the Tiger Process and the I Street Bridge Replacement, which we don't yet have a name for, but the bridge that will connect from C Street here to the Rail Yards Boulevard in Sacramento, which we have federal funds for as well. But there's a lot of, like, okay, what do these bridges look like? Exactly what's the engineering going to be? How many lanes? A lot of issues that will, that are proceeding right now. Several of you have been at the community workshops on those. Those will all be coming back through the commission and council as well. Pioneer Bluff Transition, I mentioned earlier, that'll be a set of, a lot of decisions that are going to be made constantly around how we curate essentially the transition that is inevitable now that the bridge is open and once Village Parkway is open, deeper into Southport. That South River Road section is going to have a huge amount of car traffic, but also bikes and pedestrians and wheelchairs and strollers, roller skaters and skateboards and everything else. And so the transition plan, we have to get just right, both to take, make sure that we're taking advantage of the right opportunities, but also just protecting the basic safety of our citizens and the viability of the companies that are there. So we have those dual missions to do. Early learning vision and funding. You may know we won last year the National Civic Livability Award and lots of other awards. We've been designated by the White House as one of the nation's early learning exemplars. But, and we're really strong in this area, but we don't have, it's not like we're sitting on a goldmine of money. We have to keep going out and getting additional resources for that. And also, we want to keep being best-in-class in the country. And so we, that program, the Up for West Sac program, that council member Sandine chairs, Nicole Richardson on our staff leads, is focused on the long-term vision and on the long-term funding for that program, so that it's not funded out of the general fund. And then finally is our urban farm, our urban farm priority. We're just a couple of months into the year, but this has been, this has been one of those opportunities that we never planned for. We didn't decide early on, "Hey, we want to do a bunch of breweries, brew pubs, and urban farms." But that's what people wanted to create in our community. We've tried to figure out how to make that a reality. You may know Sacramento, after a year, adopted this urban farm ordinance two weeks ago. We should, I think our expectation, so we'll have six or seven or eight urban farms open by the summer. We've been way ahead on that. We actually are having another national award for that in a couple of weeks. But there's continuing policy issues around zoning and land use and infrastructure that you and we will be seeing on a going-forward basis. So these are, this is not a comprehensive set of all the issues that are coming, but these are the ones that we've said to our staff, "You and we are accountable for delivering on these priorities by you and me, we, I mean, the staff and us, but that means all of you as well, so we try to advance some of these project areas." So I'm not going to cover the management agenda items, but I thought, so we would have about 15 minutes or so to take some questions. I want to say one other thing, which is we're going to try to use some of the commissioners in kind of interdisciplinary groups as well. So I'm saying this for the first time, because it's just coming together, but I've contacted by AARP earlier this week. And they do want me to join, but I'm not eligible yet, but soon. But because they would like West Sacramento and the City of Los Angeles to be their two demonstration sites this year for their active aging and living-in-place frameworks, which we're actually doing a good chunk of that already, but it fits very well with what I described at the beginning, which was how do we infuse policies around aging and active aging throughout our infrastructure and planning decisions? And so we're still getting the details, and the council will have to make a determination about whether we proceed with this, with the opportunity to be sort of a national leader on, on planning for aging and for seniors in conjunction with the, you know, obviously, the world's most preeminent aging organization will be, I think will probably be a pretty compelling case. That will then, if we proceed in that way, that will have lots of implications for work across the commissions. And we may ask a group of commissioners to come together to specifically focus on coordination of that work across the commission lines. And then last, she's not here, but Bernadette Austin from the Planning Commission. I'm going to ask her, and I'm going, I was going, I'm going to ask a couple of members from each of the commissions to participate in a one-day working group where we try to tease out some of the issues related to, for lack of a better term, of gentrification and kind of economic issues. We've struggled with that in the Washington Sustainable Communities Plan in particular, with exactly what is, in, for a city government, we don't do healthcare, we don't do workforce development, we don't do education. There's a whole lot of stuff that are not in our portfolio. Our partners do that, the county, the school district, the workforce investment board. But the implications of them for us in terms of inequality, housing affordability, homelessness are severe. So we want to have more of an, more of an approach and a framework around them, in particular around gentrification, than simply, you know, deferring to these other agencies. So we're going to be asking folks in all the domains to come together for just a one-day session where you're trying to tease this out. It's not the same, this is not the mission in San Francisco, it's not Manhattan, that's not that kind of gentrification. We haven't had any, there's been no displacement of anybody. In West Sacramento, that's not, all of our construction has been on empty land, so that hasn't been an issue. But we want to have a, we want to have a framework for thinking about these issues and developing the right policies as they're needed as we go forward. So if you get a call from me or Bernadette, that's what that one day is all about. All right, so let me ask if, and there's, we've got three of the council members here with us as well, so let me open it up and see if there are questions from any of the, from any of y'all. Any of us could answer. Come on, Charlie, I see you. Bob, you want to give the, give us the lowdown? Yeah. Yeah, the Disney playground was not in the master plan specifically, and... Yeah, the Disney playground was not in the master plan specifically, and... That's right. Yeah, the, I mean, one reason why no other city could do it is that in every other place, it would have been a requirement that their Parks Commission look at it first, that they hold at least one neighborhood meeting to see if it's what the neighborhood wanted, and then the city council would have to vote on it. We actually didn't do any of those. Even the city council did not, you know, we didn't vote on it either, because we had already sent enough, enough of a message, and we had a master plan that you could kind of say that fit in. And that's why we got it. And actually, the only reason we were approached, because Disney, the woman at Disney who was leading this work, used to live here. And she's, and when it came to the corporation, they said, "Well, you know, Disney's 60th anniversary is on June 1st. It would be great if we could do a Kaboom Park in the region of the Capitol where we're having this 60th anniversary celebration." But of course, nobody could do it in time, because it's already March 10th. Wait a second, I know a place that could pull it off. So as, you know, sometimes when I'm asked, "Well, why don't you, why don't we have another meeting about it? Why do we have a task force? Or why didn't you consult the neighborhood about this specific thing?" It's because so many opportunities are like this, where if we don't jump and move quickly, they don't, we don't, they don't ever happen. Because most other actors, you know, investors or companies or citizens or nonprofits have lots of other places they could do their work. And even though we don't have a lot of money for subsidies, we do have the ability to make things possible that other places often, often don't have. Bill? Charlene, the Hamilton, the Director of Community Development, says, "Yes, we have one." I don't know if I've seen it exactly, but... And frankly, you know, neighborhoods are organic, so, you know, if, give us feedback about the map or about where you live, right? If it says, you know, you live in Bright, but you think you live in Broderick, let us know. I mean, we don't decide these things. You know, we don't decide if you call yourself Gateway or the Northeast Village or that area behind Nugget. You know, we, the, you know, we're co-creating the signifiers for these districts as well. So as you look at that map, you know, give, let us know what you're thinking and what you're hearing from folks in your own neighborhood or others that you know in the community. Denise? Yeah, so we added the alternate commissioner provision to our municipal code a couple of years ago with a particular intention to try to deal with a problem at the Port Commission. The Port Commission is not represented here, because the Port Commission is four members of the city council plus our county supervisor. But we created the option for an alternate there and applied to all of the commissions. So this is the first time when we've actually appointed alternates to the commissions, and it's really for a couple of purposes. The most direct and the most important purpose is to make sure that we have a quorum, because if we're, if, you know, these are commissions that we've reconfigured to make sure that you're doing really meaty work in the city, and we've, and, you know, we've sat down with our department directors and said, "We want to make sure all the, all the important policy issues." That doesn't mean, I should be clear, it doesn't mean every project, it doesn't mean every agenda item, but the policy frameworks will be going to those commissions. But in exchange, we need to, we need to guarantee, I need to be able to guarantee to the Public Works Director that if that bridge, not the bridge, that's a project, but if, if the policy around bridges has to get done in order to meet a federal funding deadline, and the Transportation Infrastructure Commission did not get a quorum on that, on that one week of the month when they meet, then we've messed up, right? And if we're not able to be that fast, nimble, get-it-done city because the commission didn't get a quorum, it's a real problem. So the most important reason for the alternates was to make sure that we keep a quorum. But there's two others as well. One is the geographic balance of the commissions, you know, was definitely paying a lot of attention to that issue this time around. And then the third is just the sheer number of amazingly talented and enthusiastic people in the city who wanted to participate. And this provides a mechanism for that, for that, for a path to part, to community engagement and to leadership as well. So really for all those, all those reasons. The alternates are welcome to attend any of the commission meetings that they want to, but they're, they'll only have the ability to vote, to cast votes at those meetings where there's one, one regular member of the commission is absent. And as an alternate, you're not, you're not required to attend. But one, the only way this works is if you are a commissioner, a regular commissioner, and you're not going to be at the meeting, you must let the department know that you won't be there so that, and before, five minutes before the meeting, so that they can make sure that the alternate is aware that he or she is needed that evening to be, to be present. Yes?
If you're attending the meeting not because there's an absent member, that you would be seated in the audience, you would not be a voting member. And like the mayor said, you don't even, you don't need to attend the meeting, you can watch it live at home if you're trying to stay abreast. But if you're called, in the event that a member's going to be absent, then you'd be sitting up at the desk and be voting.
So this is, so in addition to the, when's the trade show goes, trade show's going up at the quarter of 15, the chairperson question. The second most likely one is, what I categorize in my, like my own list of all the things around my house I would like to take care of at some point, but I haven't yet, right? But none of them are life-threatening, but I know I need to, you know, fix the one cupboard that doesn't close properly, and it's annoying and it's a problem, but I can't get to, I either can't afford the expense, or I don't have the, I just don't have the staff capacity, by staff meaning myself, capacity to do all those things. have the, the staff capacity, by staff meaning myself, capacity to do all those things at once. And the city is the same way, right? So at any one moment, there's a shrub that's too tall, there's a stoplight that's not working, we, and our, our staff team's got to make a judgment, okay, what are the, what are the critical moments? Some things will, at any one moment, many, many things will be suboptimal, will be imperfect. In particular, things that are in transition. And so the Southport, the trucking issue, trucking is actually going to be, will continue to get more congested, not less, because not just the industrial park, but the port itself will be serving more and more trucking uses. That road is, you know, Industrial Boulevard and the Palmetto Sea Bridge were principally constructed with federal funds for the purpose of serving that, that traffic. So it will continue to get, it will continue to get worse. Now, the, both the bridges and Southport Parkway are, you know, they are in, their, their ultimate construction is additional lanes. So the Southport portion, you know, the bridge itself and then leading to Southport Parkway, those were, are both at the right trigger point, will expand. But right around the port itself, you might expect it to get significantly busier at various points, depending on traffic at the port and additional businesses opening up in and around there. Anyone else? All right. One other thing, it's the, the relationship between the planning commission and the other commissions, because Charlie and Bill asked me about this specifically, that the, the planning commission's role, the planning commission is, has the largest portfolio in the city to deal with a broad range of issues. That's mandated, mandated by law, but also expected by the city council to bring some coherence to the overall set of infrastructure stuff that we're doing. So for example, the Economic Development and Housing Commission is dealing with issues of housing policy, but actual housing projects or zoning for housing or approval of a construction of a housing development, that is, that is a planning commission issue, even though it deals with housing. Whereas an issue around, okay, what should the requirements for affordable housing construction be? Well, that's, that's an Economic Development and Housing Commission issue, not a planning issue. And similarly across the line. So transportation, another, another, another good example. The Transportation Commission doesn't make a decision about what should the road network be inside of a new subdivision that is being proposed? That's a job for the planning commission. But the determinations around, okay, what should the, as we're thinking about where should the next street, streetcar line go? Or what should the design profile for the Broadway Bridge look like? Those are the kinds of issues that you would see at the Transportation Commission. So it's a subtle nuance, but I've always found, especially in housing, that was the biggest surprise to folks serving on the housing mission, that was that they never saw the actual housing projects, because that's simply in the, the nature of the role, the statutory role, the legal role of the planning commission. And then for those of you who aren't familiar with our overall list, the Board of Appeals, which is the most opaque by design, and we've got, the Board of Appeals members are here, they hear appeals of principally code enforcement actions, but other code issues as well. And they, so they perform a judicial function in the city, so they have a lower profile. And, and they, and we hope that they will meet as rarely as possible, that everything will get resolved in a different way. But their job is specific to hear appeals from violations of the code, from hazardous materials issues and a few other specific topics. But I, I point that out just because their name tends to be less obvious to others about, well, what do they do? They don't hear appeals of your commission work, that we're not that bureaucratic here. They hear appeals of, of the code enforcement administrator and others as well. All right, thanks. Thank you all for being here tonight. I know this is a four o'clock thing in a very long session, but because of the, just the, the different way that we do work and do business in our city and the ethics piece, it really was essential. But I, on behalf of the council, I really want to thank you for, for agreeing to serve. And I, I sat down and interviewed virtually every single one of you in here, either this time or in prior cycles, for your, for your appointments. And I told the council just, I mean, how, how affirming and fulfilling it is to see the, the level of talent and passion and commitment by, by residents in our community to try to contribute and make, make our, make our city even, even better. And commissions have played a major role in the evolution of our city and why the city is considered by, by its own residents, but certainly by, even by our neighbors, is one of the most successful in the region. It's because of the citizenry of our community, both in their, in the work that you're doing here, but hopefully as you're out in the community talking to folks and listening to people in our community and broadening the, the scope and the depth of our civic[1791.41]